All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of San Francisco Commission for Monday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Our first order of business is legislative prayer by Pastor Darren Jones from Mount Sinai. I have to start.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. We all see. For his honor and go to our city attorney, our city manager, our mayor, and our city commissioners elected as the commissioners and all those that make up the body of Sanford. Let us go before the throne of grace and prayer. Amen. My heavenly Father, give in all honor, praise, and glory to thy holy name. Lord, we thank thee for life and strength. We thank thee for being the author and finisher of our faith. So, Lord, we come to you through thy holy God and Son, Jesus Christ, asking you, Lord, for your grace and your mercy. Ask you, Lord, to allow everything that be said and done today to be done in decent and in order. Allow each and every person that comes up to speak their claim, that it be clear and understood. Lord, we ask for love in the city of Sanford. We ask for love in the state of Florida and for the United States. Lord, we thank you for what you continue to do, and we thank you for each person that makes up the body of Sanford. And we ask these things in Jesus Christ's holy name. We praise thee. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, a free republic with its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate it. Okay, we have a couple of presentations, uh, special presentations this evening. First is from the Senator Jason Burden from Florida. Just at nine, can I ask? Give us an update? Just making up numbers if I got.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the City Commission. It's my honor and pleasure to be here with you to give you an update on what was, I think, a very successful legislative session here in Florida this year. As all of you know, Florida is a state building, has a sixty-day session every year. So, we do all of the state's business pretty rapid with only one constitutional obligation, and that is to pass the budget. Having to say, we did pass a one hundred and seventeen billion dollar budget this year, the largest in the state's history, mostly because we have more people than we've ever had. The last three years, we have seen an influx of folks from all over the country, all over the world. And we continue at a very brisk clip. You all see it here as we talk about development in central Florida and some of the bills that we handled this year. But we are on pace to still see a thousand people a day in Florida and a thousand people a week in central Florida. So, as we talk about affordable housing, as we talk about water and wastewater treatment, uh, those are very, very big issues that the state has tried to address this year as we steer into, uh, the biggest of the big. A couple of big things that, um, I want to highlight in the budget is that we had two point seven billion dollars in tax relief. And that comes in two forms for our residents. Number one is we continue a lot of what you all have become familiar with in terms of our hurricane preparedness sales tax holidays or our Labor Day sales tax holidays. Uh, those are short-term, one-time. We do those every year as we think we can afford them. And then this year, we did some more permanent changes. Um, we did a family-friendly sales tax repeal this year where, um, we have now, uh, had a moratorium on sales tax for diapers, sales tax for cribs, sales tax for car seats, all of those things that will help families be able to afford the items for their growing, uh, growing families. Uh, we made sure that we had plenty of money, uh, in the coffers for this while we still put aside, uh, ten point nine billion dollars in our state reserves. And so, as we look into hurricane season, um, as well as we did, we also feel very confident that we will have the resiliency necessary should a hurricane come, uh, again this year. Couple of big bills that I worked on, the largest being the Wildlife Corridor. Uh, this year, we protected seventeen point seven billion acres without robbing anybody of their private property rights. It was written up in chief there, uh, scrutiny, a huge charitable trust, uh, as a first in the country of ability for folks to maintain their private property rights while still being able to work with the state so that our apex predator species may be able to have corridors in which they are able to reproduce and proliferate. This is our Florida panther, our black bear. Uh, we also put two hundred million dollars aside. We're going to build a ten-foot-wide non-motorized path from Naples to Orlando. So, you will be able to walk or ride your bike from Naples up to Orlando. That's also going to be a loop that goes up through Flagler and down around Tigertown and comes back. Um, we will have our Cross Seminole Trail, not only completed, but you'll be able to ride your bike from St. Peter to Tigertown through Seminole County. We're going to have one that goes from Jacksonville to Pensacola. Uh, we believe that this will be one of the top eco-term destinations in the world, right up there with the Appalachian Trail. And so, that was my big bill that I did this year, one of the big ones that I did at the conclusion. Uh, another big one had to do with pharmacy benefit managers and streamlining, getting rid of the middlemen that are increasing drug prices in the state of Florida. And the third big one I did was in conjunction with Sheriff Lima, we went after, uh, drug dealers. And we put increased penalties for those who have put fentanyl in anything that we find. We lead the country in prosecutions for those who have penalized fentanyl because it is a crisis that we continue to be on the forefront of. And I want to thank Sheriff Lima and my partners in the house for that. As far as the budget highlight goes, I think that's what a lot of people get really excited about. Um, I was very pleased that I, um, had a number of things in the budget this year. Unfortunately, some of it got vetoed. Uh, but the city of Sanford did pretty well. We, um, had some of our top-funded projects, the Lake Jessup Watershed Project. We continue to use Lake Apocrypha and its success as a model for what it is we want to do to try and continue to clean Lake Jessup as well as, uh, some of the drainage stuff out by the airport. Unfortunately, we did have a couple of things vetoed in Seminole and Sanford, um, the cybersecurity program and some of the fire stations. Uh, but we, we, we got them through, and the Midway Drainage Project, which I think some of us have read about. But we got them through with the legislature, and I'm not afraid to try again, see if we can't get them in and see if there isn't a better way to get the governor's support on it next year when we try and do this as well. Certainly, the need is there. Um, things like the Midway Drainage Project are extremely complicated. You've got many agencies and many hands working on this, not only the city and the county and the state, but you've got the Water Management Districts, you've got Department of Environmental Protection, and on top of that, the Department of Act Consumer Resources, uh, Consumer Services does a great deal in water and wastewater, too. So, but between all of them, sometimes we just got to get all the cooks in the kitchen at the same time. Good news is nobody in the legislature seem to have a problem with it, so I don't, I don't foresee it being a problem to go ahead and do that again. Couple of lots so far, questions so far? That kind of stuff, we did sixty days worth of work, we got stuff all over the place, we can ask you that. All right. In total, with budget appropriations, um, uh, I would say that, um, one of the biggest places that doesn't seem to get as much traction that, that should is record funding in our education system. Uh, this year, U.S. News and World Report ranked Florida as number one in the country in K through twelve and higher end. Never before since rankings have been out has one state gotten the highest ranking in both K through twelve and higher end in the same year. And that's a testament to some of the things that we've done, including the universal voucher program that we funded this year. Uh, we got the highest FEFP, the Florida Education Finance Plan, the formula that we use to put money in the classroom. It's the highest in history with increased teacher salaries. Uh, we believe we're on a pathway to be a model for the rest of the country in terms of workforce readiness. We've always been really, uh, forward-thinking when it comes to our vocational education, our trade education in Seminole State and around the state, and that's paying off as well, we're getting people who are more prepared than ever for a global economy. And that is, um, evident in the state's commitment by, uh, helping and funding. One of the things that Representative Smith and I did was Seminole State's workforce building fee. It's going to be the largest expansion of nursing programs he's seen in Florida, uh, this year. And I think everybody knows that nursing, uh, is one of our top needs. So, uh, meeting those vocational education needs that we have, continuing to fund, uh, UCF. Uh, UCF, again, joins the Big Twelve later this year, which is very exciting. And so, we've continued to provide funding for them to support that as they grow in stature throughout the country. Um, we were forty-fourth in education in nineteen ninety-nine in terms of outcomes in K through twelve. So, it opened forty-fourth, but first is probably not a story I thought we would tell in my lifetime, but a testament to the hard work and, um, really the success of our, our education system in the state of Florida, which, again, is unique to us, every state makes that individual choice. Uh, any questions so far? Again, like I said, I'm covering a million miles an hour here, I gotta get it out. All right. I have got, um, uh, in addition to tax relief highlights, we have done, um, legislation on protecting seniors, protecting children. Um, we had, uh, our higher education, our K through twelve bill, but we also, um, did a number of other things such as in human trafficking, military, and space, veteran affairs, uh, supporting Florida's foster youth. I mentioned briefly the controlled substances bill. One of the things that may be, um, helpful to let everyone know about is we are first in the country in outlawing what we call nitazines, which are Frankenstein opioids. So, we all know how bad opioids are and how bad fentanyl is. Nitazines are opioid-like compound that is ten times more potent, and it's starting to be found in some of our illicit drugs. And so, this year, working with the sheriffs, again, we, in the Attorney General, we have in Florida outlawed nitazine and all of its derivatives. You can have alcohol, benzol, all these things that get put in there. But they're made by these clandestine accounts who are trying to outdo each other, and they have no medicinal value, and you get a little whiff of it and you're dead. Um, the thought is, not the thought, the, the mantra is, if, uh, fentanyl can kill you, nitazine will kill you. And so, these are compounds that are being developed by these folks who have no medicinal intent whatsoever. Uh, and we're trying to outlaw them as we find them before they make their way onto the streets. And so, that's something to be watching out for. The sheriff already knows about it, and we're working with all law enforcement across the state to, uh, be able to identify those with our medical examiners and then charge those appropriately so that as it goes up the chain, we don't have it coming back down to our streets anymore. So, far so good? All right. We'll wrap it up here. Uh, we did bills on natural emergencies, the death penalty, immigration, elections, local ordinances, uh, the affordable housing bill I mentioned, uh, and, uh, tort reform. And so, if you have any individual questions about that, I'm happy to either take them out or if I've said something that sparked a couple of additional questions and you want to follow up later, happy to do so. We, um, Zach Brodessen is here, he's in my office, uh, and we have a handful of others that we work with. Uh, our office is in Lake Mary this year, uh, and we cover, uh, my office covers all of Seminole County and part of Orange. So, I have Mayland, Winter Park in my district as well. And we are now back for the summer. So, as you pick up things, feel free to contact the office. I have office hours every week and happy to go and chat with anybody, whether it's, um, here on the commission or any constituents that have any concerns about what we might need to do at the state level. So far so good? Any questions? Perfect. Well, I, I've spoken with a number of you, uh, certainly this year and over the years, about any concerns you might have. Like I said, my commitment is to make sure that we, um, get the funding that is necessary to continue sort of our infrastructure. So, particularly water and wastewater, as well as Lake Jessup and St. John's issues. Those tend to be, uh, the issues that I think are big-ticket items that we can work together on, partner with, whether it's the Water Management Districts or Department of Environmental Protection to get us the support we need so that we have, we have clean water here.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank the San Antonio particularly for the efforts for the water projects. And while they were not successful with cybersecurity and the fire department items, we look forward to championing them again next year.
Thank you. I, I, you know, it's, it, it's hard. I'm the sheriff, the sheriff of environment, natural resources, and general government. And general government sounds like this kind of catch-all term, which it is, but that's where the fire trucks reside. And I thought, this is going to be great. I can actually pay for the fire trucks myself, forgetting that the governor also has an opinion in this. And so, one of the things that happens when you look at something like a fire truck in the state budget is that their office asks whether this is a something of state concern or whether it is something that is a local concern. And if it doesn't meet that threshold, sometimes we have to redesign or go back to the drawing board because there are fire stations that act regionally within the county that have EMS services and, and do a little bit more. And so, maybe the, the play for one of, some, Fire Department Forty, which is one of their dealings, uh, next year is to talk about expansion of services of the catchment area, to talk about how much of the unincorporated county that it serves so that they don't just see city of Sanford, the state then uses it as a much larger role. And so, there are, as we get vetoes, um, on a policy bill, you'll get a letter from the governor that says, this is why we vetoed it and because we don't agree with this, this, and this. In budget items, they just get vetoed, you kind of have to guess. And so, if I had to guess, I would say, all right, let's go redo the application. We'll certainly get it funded. I'll pay for it. At least get it in the budget. Uh, and then see if we can't convince our partners in the other branches of government that this is something that is indeed a state concern and not just a civic activity concern.
It certainly is important to recognize Sanford protects the Sanford International Airport.
Yes. And I put it, and I put all that stuff in there. And so, then what happens is, um, in this instance, what happens very frequently, and this happens in the environment silo as well, is that the governor's office will see that that, that money exists for projects like that elsewhere in the budget and doesn't want to double pay. And so, as we do environmental stuff, like if we were to do kind of the drainage stuff, they will go, well, we already have a grant program available with Department of Environmental Protection, so I don't want to pay for this specific project. They want to make you go fill out a grant application and go get the money there. Well, when you have something like, uh, the fire station in Forty, now you're pulling in the feds because that's covered by the FAA, and they're going to say, well, they shop another pot of money available for it there. And you say, no, that's really us because we, and so, we get into a lot more nuanced arguments. You'd be surprised. You think with hundreds of projects in the budget that nobody really, everybody talks about all of them all the time. So, um, like I said, I feel pretty good argument-wise. We didn't make it this year. A lot of great projects, it does take two or three years to get through just because you have to get everybody familiar with why and what the impact is and how we're going to use the money. And, uh, these, these were all very, very good projects, so I felt good to put my name on it. Hopefully, we'll be able to get through next year.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Thank you for that. But also, I wanted to thank you for, um, working with our students when we were up there.
Oh, yeah.
I think one of them was, was willing to engage more than any of us was expecting.
Uh-oh.
She's great.
And it was, it was a very good conversation. And, um, I had some conversations with the students afterward about it.
Good.
They really had learned a lot.
Well, and I'll tell you, um, and that's one thing that everybody is, is welcome to do. Um, over the years, as I've been in the house and now in the senate, there are student groups that come up where if we plan the days far enough in advance, we are able to do mock sessions in the, in the chambers. And so, I know Masters Academy from Oviedo and our group here from Sanford, they get coordinated with our office, and we find a day that we're not technically on the floor, maybe we're in committee meetings or not meeting, and then we'll go in there and run like a mock session. We'll do a, you know, a red light camera bill or texting and driving, something that all the kids are kind of aware of, and run them through exactly what that process is like. And it's, it's, it's a great, uh, opportunity for, for folks that maybe don't participate in other programs to get a little bit of civics lessons. It's a lot of fun. Kind of like, I like to present over, but if, if questions are great. All right, well, thank you very much. If anybody needs anything, um, all my contact information, Nora's got it all, so we'll figure it out. Well, thanks very much and happy to work with you all. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
And next, Representative Plankin could not be here, but, or Representative, uh, Javon Gordon is wanting to speak on her behalf. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Javon Gordon, and I'm the aide to Representative Rachel Plaken. She regrets that she wasn't unable to make it tonight and sends her well wishes to you all. A few highlights she would like you all to know, the Florida Legislature had a very successful session, and many said the legislature accomplished more this year than all other legislative sessions in the past thirty years combined. Some of their accomplishments directly and indirectly impact business owners such as Representative Plaken and all of us as members of the business community. Representative Plaken has had a great voting record when it comes to small business and just received a ninety-eight percent A rating from the Florida Chamber. So, just know that she is an advocate of small businesses here in Sanford. She also believes that public safety is essential for all of us as a community to thrive. She and the legislature passed several important measures to support public safety this session, including reforming our bail systems to ensure dangerous offenders stay behind bars, aggressively pursuing those who prey on vulnerable, combating human traffickers and fentanyl dealers. She's the House sponsor of HV three six five that passed and was signed into law by the governor. This bill is filled, excuse me, this bill filled eight hundred and pulled up, allowed dangerous drug dealers to literally get away with murder when they sold substances to a user and the user died. If the user also had alcohol or other substances that night, the dealer could not be charged. So, Rep. Plaken worked with the Seminole County Sheriff's Office on the bill, and Senator Broder and now dangerous drug dealers will be held accountable. Setting the stage for the next generation to be a part of our business community and successful, Rep. Plaken co-sponsored HV one, the largest expansion of school choice in the nation while realigning and increasing funding for charter and public schools. She also voted to reform our workforce education system to ensure every student has the ability to pursue a fulfilling career. She helped level the playing field for all businesses, taking the state away from picking winners and losers who failed economic development programs and unlimited estate programs that were not producing a return on investment. In regards to taxes, Rep. Plaken was the very first co-sponsor of the tax reduction package, putting one point two billion back in the pockets of Florida families and reduced business rental tax down to four point five percent, which is great for small businesses. Rep. Plaken also sponsored HV fifteen seventeen, a bill she worked on with the agency for persons with disabilities, and was a bipartisan effort to help some of our most vulnerable communities. Also, she co-sponsored numerous bills to support our first responders, veterans, and protect our Jewish communities from antisemitism, and Rep. Plaken has also co-sponsored efforts to promote Black Israel. She fought hard for the city of Sanford and passed around ten million in total appropriations, which include the environmental protect, excuse me, environmental projects for Lake Jessup and Lake Monroe, Sanford Airport's stormwater management, Seminole County Hope and Healing Center in collaboration with the sheriff's office, Eye Dignity to help those who are homeless, foreign poverty, to receive an ID so they can find housing and employment, the Central Florida Zoo and the Botanical Gardens. These are just the few that passed and affected Sanford here. We thank you for your time, and please let us know how we can help you and serve. Have a great one.
Thank you.
Can you share with her our thanks for, for working on the appropriations laws also? And, um, for her, she also helped with our students.
Yes, I, I remember meeting you and then, uh, City Commissioner Williams as well. So, thank you guys. And, oh.
Thank you.
Next, we have Deputy Chief Perkins. Does the Lord stand out?
Good evening, members of the commission, mayor, city manager, scolder, everyone in the audience. Um, it's a great pride, it's with great pride and admiration that I stand here today to recognize and honor the exceptional valor and selflessness of our city's finest, the members of the, men and women of the Sanford Police Department who serve as our guardians, our protectors, and some may even say heroes. This is not only a celebration of individual achievements, but it's also a reflection of the collective efforts of the unwavering dedication of our entire police force. And it is an opportunity for us to express our deepest gratitude and appreciation for the sacrifices made by these outstanding men and women whose bravery and commitment inspire us all. The first individual that's going to be recognized tonight was supposed to be done by outside of agency, um, Include Florida Incorporated, but the representative is not here. So, I will make an attempt to acknowledge that officer. And that officer is Officer Jason Hernandez. He will come down. Include Florida Incorporated.
Deputy Chief?
Yes, sir.
I recognize that you're recognizing the officer, but I think he has somebody else with him.
Yes, what's that? His wife, Jennifer, is here as well. As she joins him. Officer Hernandez was recognized by Florida, I'm sorry, Include Florida on, it was in twenty twenty-three, and they gave him the, he was presented the Person of Valor. Officer Hernandez responded to a call on May sixteen, two thousand and twenty-three that involved an autistic male. Officer Hernandez reached out to Lisa Eisenberg from Include Florida, and she, who was a special needs advocate and consultant for, she reached out to her, he reached out to her for assistance. Officer Hernandez made efforts to create a comfortable environment and was able to develop rapport with the child. This allowed Officer Hernandez to walk the child into the hospital, where staff was able to assist him. I wish Ms. Eisenberg was here to express how much of an impact Officer Hernandez had on the child and, uh, their organization, but I did the best that I can. Congratulations again. The next two officers that will be receiving award of commend, award of commendation will be Officers French and Officer Riston. On July ninth, these officers responded to thirty-two hundred South Orlando Drive for an individual possibly drowning in Lake Attah. Once unseen, officers witnessed a male in the middle of the lake treading water and refusing to return to shore and conveying he wanted to die. Officers made the sound decision along with assistance of the fire department to utilize dialogue with the male and exhausted every attempt to persuade him to exit the water of his own frequent will. The male did not comply and was visibly becoming exhausted from being in the water. The male fought with officers and was safely brought to shore and taken into custody. Please, officer. Officer French. This next award or commendation is also awarded to Officer French. Too good to keep track of, which is a good thing.
Good thing he didn't introduce Shavana because he's not helping him.
That's, uh, Captain Justin Anna. Uh, Officer French, on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, he volunteered to go conduct water rescues around the flooded areas of the city of Sanford in response to Hurricane Eden. He dressed in waders and responded to the areas that were most affected. In doing so, he rescued a total of seven people and six dogs. His heroic efforts go above and beyond any normal duty that officers will deal with this on a daily basis. Congratulations. My final award tonight is a lifesaving award, and that will be issued to Officer Peyton Lewis. On September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, you responded to twenty-four thirty-three Chase Avenue for an unknown male who suffered cardiac arrest and collapsed in his home. Upon your arrival, you made contact with the male who was lying motionless on the ground and was not breathing. You immediately began lifesaving cardiopulmonary resuscitation until the paramedics took over. You performed CPR, CPR for well over three minutes and were later informed by the paramedics that had you not performed CPR, the male would not have survived. Thank you for your dedication.
Deputy Chief, good morning. Again, we want to thank these, I asked, let me give another round of applause. Detective Parnell, you also have representatives of the department in the back of the room that normally not always take the recognition. So, while they didn't get the award, you can be significant.
Yes, sir. We have Lieutenant Mike Francis. He runs our, one of our, he's a, a watch commander on one of our night shift. Sergeant, uh, Shapik Nasuli. He's a supervisor on one of our, uh, sergeant on one of our night shifts. He's not dressed in a uniform, but also Sergeant Joshua Memminger is here as well. He's not dressed in a uniform, but also Sergeant Joshua Mimic is here as well. Also Sergeant Gere Zari gets in the back, I didn't see him, he's in the back door, but he's a patrol officer as well on our night shift.
Thank you, thank you for doing every day for us.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
First, we get the light.
What do you want us?
Yes.
Oh, there we go, hang on. Oh, hang on, caught up in the fire. That's not a good thing.
All right, we have one more presentation. This is for Parks and Recreation Month. So, I've seen lots of Parks and Recreation people in the audience. Are they all coming to join us? I would like that. country, including the city of Sanford. Whereas our Parks and Recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase communities' economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local taxpayer, increased tourism, the attraction or retention of citizens, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas Parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the city of Sanford recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I are with you by virtue of the authority vested in the city of Sanford, do hereby officially proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. I'm just gonna sit, every time I move, it kills them. I love Parks.
I know. Parks and Rec, April July, everybody, right? Sorry.
He's certainly been working really hard.
Thanks, that's nice. Oh, and this is typical, because I'm in my health, and the plans have changed, so I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the commissioners, to the Park, of course, the Parks and Rec team. These are the men and women who start early, they finish late, they have their twenty-eight parks and open spaces, facilities, pools, programming, special events. So, we're very, very proud of what they do. There is no typical day for them. It changes often and on a dime, but they answer the call and they do it beautifully. So, I'm very, very proud of them. You, you get to come up here a lot and I get to speak to the commission, but these are the men and women who do all of the hard work. So, I hope if you see them out or at a game or at a facility, you'll stop and say hello. They are the best at what they do.
Yes, they are.
Lisa, do they get to go home now?
Yes.
They were very good sports, thank you.
No, I will stick around and represent them.
Thanks, everybody. Deputy, um, February's visitors to the Commission, the minutes for the June twelfth, twenty-twenty-three work session, we're agreeing, we, I do have a small, minor change that I would like on the work session minutes, where the mayor would provide information regarding the Hopper Academy loan. I would like that to reflect that that was a potential program for grant completion loans for historic preservation of this Hopper Academy. Thank you. Mr. Speaker?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Call in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Um, do you want to, the ordinance have any, um, want to speak on any items on the consent agenda? If you know him, we'll bring him back to the mission, consent A through L.
Mr. Speaker.
Second.
Motion second. Call in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Brings us to ordinance forty-seven thirty-eight, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, relating to the regulation in Camden and amending the provisions of section sixty-two seventy-two, the Code of Ordinance of the City of Sanford, with section sixty-two seventy-two repealed and full and revised that being the contents of section sixty-two seventy-two and six manner as the Code modifier determines to be appropriate. Providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for an array of definitions, rules, regulations, requirements, procedures, processes relating to Camden, providing for arrest procedures, providing trespass warnings, providing for enforcement, providing for penalties, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for qualification, correction of script and his errors, providing for effective aid.
Listen, Mayor, members of the City Commission, city staff recommends that the commission adopt ordinance number forty-seven thirty-eight on first reading. This is an ordinance that will assist city staff in maintaining and inviting environment for city residents and visitors to the city and ensure that the city has adequate and clear remedy to address those persons who might be acting a manner to obscure city businesses.
Captain Justin Allison, do you guys have any questions?
Questions, we're here, you got a presentation on it or?
Okay, because I'm right there, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any either. I'm, I'm, I'm super happy you're addressing me.
Yeah.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain. This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience, which is to speak to the side. There's no one, I'll place the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. On first reading, the ordinance forty-seven thirty-nine, Mr. Cole.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexed in the voluntary petition. Certain real property generally addressed as one oh six West Jenkins Circle, located contiguous to the city of Sanford in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one seven one point oh four four Florida statutes. Redefining the boundary to the city of Sanford to include said property, amending the boundaries of the city in accordance with the provisions of section one sixty-six oh three one Florida statutes, providing for finding, providing for conditions during the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of circuit court, with the chief administrative office of Seminole County, the Department of State, providing for a legal description and a map, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for nonqualification, taking to administrative actions, and providing for effective aid.
Listen, Mayor, members of the City Commission, the city staff have reviewed the request relaxation and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. And therefore, the staff's recommendation, City Commission approved, first reading, ordinance number forty-seven thirty-nine, to annex twenty-eight acres, bearing the project address of one oh six West Jenkins Circle, as legally described into the city of Sanford.
This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience, which is to speak to the side. Same no one, I'll place the public hearing, bring in the commission for action.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Ordinance forty-seven forty, Mr. Cole.
This ordinance is entitled an ordinance, City of Sanford, Florida, annexed in the voluntary petition. Certain real property generally addressed as twenty-two twelve Southwest Road, located contiguous to the city of Sanford in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of section one seven one point oh four four Florida statutes. Redefining the boundary to the city of Sanford to include said property, amending the boundaries of the city in accordance with provisions of section one sixty-six oh three one Florida Providing for findings, providing for conditions, directing the city clerk to record the ordinance with the clerk of circuit court, from the chief administrative office of Seminole County, with the Department of State. Providing for a legal description and a map, providing for incorporation of that exhibit, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for nonqualification, taking to administrative actions, and providing for effective aid.
Listen, Mayor, members of the City Commission, the city staff have reviewed the request relaxation and found the request to meet the criteria set forth in the Florida statutes. And therefore, the staff's recommendation, City Commission approved, the first reading, the ordinance number forty-seven forty, to annex one two acres, bearing the project address of twenty-two twelve Southwest Road, as legally described into the city of Sanford.
This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience, which is to speak to the side. Same no one, I'll place the public hearing, bring in the commission for action.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. This is the final plaque of Bel Air Place.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, before you use the final plaque for Bel Air Place, we propose a nine feet long Seminole County residential community on twenty-two point thirty-seven acres with a project address of seventeen oh one, salary avenue. It is the staff's recommendation, that the City Commission approved, resolution number...
I'm sorry, the final plaque, thank you.
The City Commission, that is, the City Commission approved the final plaque.
Anyone who wants to speak to the side? Turn in the commission.
Move to approve.
This is a quad digit matter and have such a close disclosure of all ex parte communications, investigations, like the different expert opinions regarding this matter. All right, now we're ready.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Resolution thirty-one thirty-nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the commission, uh, city staff has asked for approval of resolution number thirty-one thirty-nine to lend the city budget unauthorized to procure goods and services for McNassus Land and Head Service for the repair of the irrigation system on the Riverwalk due to the impacts of Hurricane Ian.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Resolution thirty-one forty, Mr. Cole.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is a request to create one full-time permanent administrative services manager in the Public Corrections Department. And as the city staff's recommendation, City Commission approved, resolution thirty-one forty, a mandatory classification pay plan to implement this action.
All right. I have questions on.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
First, uh, we don't currently have a director of public works. Is it fair to be making these staff changes without having the person who we made higher make these decisions? Because these are permanent.
That is correct. Very fair question, Commissioner. What we have had is that looking at these operations and have determined that these are the three positions, three changes, that we feel will make the operations more effective. Good question in terms of waiting or not waiting, and we decided, no, we have sensed that this is what's helpful to make that operation even.
Okay. So, my second question is, and I'm hoping that I'm right about this, there seems to be a, a calculation error on the pay with this position, thirty-one forty covers. It's telling me that it's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar a year job?
Well, Mr. Razak and I, but the, you are correct in pointing out that the other two do not include fringe benefits. This one includes fringe benefits, so there was some, um, lack of consistency in how this was prepared.
Okay, so even with benef, even with benefits, this job is worth a hundred and forty-two thousand?
The salary actually is about seventy, it's advertised sixty to seventy, and then add on the benefits and that's what benefits it.
Benefits aren't usually doubled of the cost.
Yeah, Cindy's got to be like, Craig, Razak, Assistant City Manager, Cindy, Lindsay, Finance Director, it's kind of forty-nine percent is the benefit right now.
So, forty-nine percent of the salary?
Yes, so.
That still doesn't equal four, a hundred and forty-two.
Well, we took the new pay plan into effect, which increased the ranges of, for this position, for middle, 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 third major, the low end is sixty-four, the mid is eighty-four, and the high end is one oh four.
Okay, but the next position is what we're calling an engineer. Is that just by title or is that by?
That's the position, yeah, utilities and systems engineer. And to clarify, that clarification from Ms. Lindsay on that one, she deducted the current positions that are replacing, for example, the utility project manager, that's her replacing admin position, so we took that salary, deducted it from, from that, and that gets to seventy thousand or whatever's in the number there. So, that's the reason why the changes, changes for the salaries.
So, the first one is a brand new position?
Yes.
The second two were reclassified?
That's correct. And that's why the salaries are a little lower in those amount of items, that's close to the creation of the new position.
And there's such much salary of fiscal impact.
I understand that, but, but seventy-seven plus forty-nine percent of seventy-seven do not equal one forty-two in any calculation. That was my concern.
Well, maybe Ms. Lindsay took eighty-four thousand and did, you know, did quick math and said that maybe equivalent to one forty-four. Maybe she just took the mid.
So, what is that?
What's the top?
The top is one oh four for the administrative service.
Put the top.
You put the top. Here's Finance Director, Finance Director.
The largest possible fiscal impact.
Yeah.
That's what she did.
Well, we didn't do that on the other seat.
It's harder to figure out because you have to know what the salary and benefits of the old position were to deduct.
How many administrative services managers do we have?
We have one in police, one in fire, in public works and utilities, is one of the larger departments, larger than both fires.
They have one of all yet.
And who's definitely needed.
We have an administrative coordinator, then we have, we have six administrate, administrative positions, so we do need some supervision there.
That's actually a position that I think has been talked about.
Yeah, I'm just picking up the ball.
Somebody has to manage all of the finance stuff within the department.
I, I, I understand and appreciate that, but, but this is, um, this is, uh, over a quarter of a million dollars of new salaries that we're taking on. And I know I'm a broken record, but we still don't have some of the pay study, we still don't have the other pay issues resolved in this city. And we know for a fact public works needs more workers on the street before they do in the second floor of this building. That's just one person.
Yeah, and it's been a challenge in recruiting some of those workers, those workers who's in the field, that's, we have seven vacancies in utilities alone, in water and sewer alone, and that's not counting the ones on light duty, the ones on F M L. That's, we have seven vacancies in utilities alone, in water and sewer alone, and that's not counting ones on light duty, ones on F M L, so we might have ten of those.
But maybe part of this two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars would be better spent fixing the pay on those positions to be able to recruit people that want to work here.
I know that those people that work in that department are working like around the clock. It's one of our heavier departments, it's one of the ones that we call upon all the time. Public works and utilities is its own beast, and I know the employees that are working there are carrying on a heavy load. And there needs to be some kind of structure in the department, and I agree fully with, you know, amending the classification for that.
That doesn't relieve the people who work in the streets?
Absolutely.
Doesn't give them any help?
I agree.
We're hiring another office position to oversee other office position.
It does seem like just more bureaucracy, doesn't it?
Thank you.
Well, we're looking at making a better managed operation.
Okay.
Just one thing. And you did bring up that point.
We did. And that one, Joy, she brought it so good.
And I'm not trying to pick on you, Craig, I know you've inherited.
No, it'd be fair, Commissioner, your question earlier about making decisions without the director. It's going to take some time to build the job classification or description and everything, but especially the new ones. So by the time that happens, it might be the director making the decisions in place, so we'll see how it is.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass the two hands please. Resolution thirty-one forty.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Commission, the city staff recommends, City Commission approved, resolution thirty-one forty-one, amending the classification pay plan to reclassify one full-time equivalent utility engineer technician in the public works utilities department to a utility systems engineer.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass the two hands please. Resolution thirty-one forty-two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Commission, the city staff recommends, City Commission approved, resolution thirty-one forty-two, amending the classification pay plan to reclassify one full-time equivalent administrative services three in the public works utilities department to a project manager for utilities.
Motion.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Attorney comments?
I have no additional arguments to my...
City Clerk's report.
I just want to remind the commission that you may have, well, you should have received your Form One. Oh, yes. That is due no later than July third to the supervisor.
That's right, thank you.
I stopped by by the way, I realized I have to stop in. She sent one there. Alright. City Managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commission, you have before you on your place the June City Managers' monthly report. And then I'd like to remind everybody that you have the envelope that we have fireworks next week. You and the residents of the city staff to come out and go to Santa fireworks. That's all.
And while we're on the City Managers' monthly update, I was wondering, on the next one, you could look at below three itself for the City Manager. Anything else? Nope. Okay. That brings us to citizens' participation. And we have several from American Legion Post fifty-three, so I'll start with Commander Donald Smith, I think. Unless y'all have a different one.
Good evening, members. My name is Donald Smith, Commander of Post, American Legion Post fifty-three, twenty-five forty-four Park Drive. We invite you all to come by sometime for coffee and chat between the hours of nine and twelve. But tonight, what I'm trying to put forward is there's a parcel of land that is on our easement between Park and Elm. That we would like to display a cannon and an American flag for veterans in the City of Sanford. This past year, we have Memorial Day, there was only one veteran organization that was allowed to place a wreath over here at the county memorial. We would like to be able to invite all veterans, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, schools, to place a wreath and memorance of our fallen and departed. Members of the, of the military. I was told by someone upstairs that would never be possible, and that's why I brought it to you, Commission, to try and get it in writing that we could place this cannon and flag in that corner.
Do you have an overhead? Chris, do we have an overhead?
Just to follow up, I just spoke with one of them earlier today and put him in touch with Mr. Radzak. We put him in touch with one of our planning engineers.
Why, why is it impossible? Why would they think it's...
You want me to show you exactly where I'm at?
I believe it's impossible.
Why did the city say it was impossible?
They said because it's an easement. Right here is where we're talking about. There's two palm trees here, we maintain this corner presently. So far back, down this way is an easement, over this way is an easement. We only have room to place it right over in this area.
Got it.
And it will be something that we, for all veterans of the City of Sanford, not a county veteran park.
Right, so couldn't the easement still be maintained? What are we talking about?
Well, that's why I sent it to staff for them to establish.
We just need to make sure it's on their property, which we would have no issue not on the right of way.
As far as we know, it's not a right of way, it is an easement. I was told upstairs that if somebody came down Elm Street from the north down and ran off the road and hit the county, that'd be a problem. Well, you know what? My wife and I discovered today on the way down Sanford Avenue, if somebody just passed twenty-fifth ran into one of the church signs that it said back. You know?
Have you already got the cannon?
Yes, we do.
They used to have one.
We added our old post.
Oh, yeah. So this is where y'all will move?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Chris, you're the one that's handling that?
I need to probably go to their development file, grab their survey, because the right of way right there is curving. And I'll just need to make sure it's on their property, but planning will not have an issue as long as it's on their property, and it doesn't call a site clearance.
There is curving on that, on that corner all the way around.
No, the, yeah, I spoke to Mr. Keller tonight, and I said that I would physically get the drawings and, you know, we would go out there and take a look.
So if it's possible, can we get something in writing before we move the cannon?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we can do it tomorrow, we'll work on it tomorrow.
So he'll take care of that, he'll come out and look at it tomorrow to make sure it's not on the right way, and then we can provide...
I'll get with public works engineer, and we'll both go out there and look at it together and make sure we can get it in a good place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
And then is, what's that, bar friends? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
And we will close for the citizens' participation. Am I sure we're...
Okay, so I have several items, and I probably won't take up too much of your time, but there, there's some serious things I want to address, and it's only eight o'clock. I want to start off with the positive, Juneteenth was a phenomenal event, I was very happy to see the staff that was there, and, I mean, excuse me, the people that came out, all of the vendors, the performances. And staff on board, Jennifer always does a phenomenal job, and even though I didn't get to speak to her, did she hear, no? Even though I didn't get to speak to her, I just wanted to thank her publicly for doing that. Being that it's a federal holiday, I wanted to know if it was possible next year the city could, you know, do a little bit more. And I saw City Council, Berry, Longwood, Altamont, our sister cities that are embracing Juneteenth. And they had, you know, events that was, you know, done by the city, by those different entities, so just food for thought. I left the card home, I brought the wrong one, but the Sanford Herald did a nice article about Ms. Inez Bowman, and Ms. Bowman is turning one hundred years old. And they encouraged everyone that could, you know, to send her a card for her birthday. And I wanted to get you all to sign it, and I brought my own personal one for Ms. Bowman and not the other. So I don't know if Mr. Bonaparte, if we could just get, you know, possibly, I know we have City of Sanford cards in the City Managers' office. If we could get one and just say, you know, happy one hundred birthday, I don't know what the procedure on that, but I thought that would be very nice for one of our residents.
Oh, yeah, I saw that and I forgot, can you text, can you text me something?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, we should definitely send her something on behalf of the city.
Right.
Right?
And, 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 I mean, I know we can't do it for everyone, but this was one of the ones that was in the Sanford Herald, it's a community event, and I just thought that it was nice to do that.
Mr. Sir, you don't have any cards in the office, are you concerned? Yeah, there's some other cards.
There's no cards, and you can just write happy.
You know what, I'll buy a, I'll buy a...
Don't tell Lisa that because they have the old...
They have the old...
And you know what, you know, you could do it for everybody that turns a hundred, because very few people turn a hundred.
Right, right. So if we could grab a card or whatever, I will volunteer to bring it back up here. They're asking for it July first. Okay, so I can bring it back up, I know it's a little bit too late, and I apologize, I wanted all of the submission to sign it, but if it just comes from the City of Sanford, then that, that's...
When is her birthday, actually?
I think it's July first.
It is, so...
Yeah, because the cards are supposed to be sent to her daughter, maybe Dana, by the first.
Well, we can get it out tomorrow, it might make it.
Yeah.
Well, there's your calls of that, and I appreciate you bringing that. What if the city, the city clerk's not only sent a card for the flower?
I think that'd be nice.
That would be great.
On behalf of the City Commission.
Okay. Is everybody on board with that?
Okay, so, okay.
Alright, so on to the heavier items. It's rainy season, and we're approaching a hurricane season if we're not already in it. And I just really just have some concerns about, you know, the communications. If we could beat up our post, our notices, using our small microgroups, our graduates from the Citizens and Academy to share information about, you know, debris, lawn clippings. Not blowing that stuff into the street. We had heavy rains this weekend, and I saw a lot of the issues of the flooding was because we had leaves in our sewer systems. I would like for the city to be a little bit more proactive when we're getting ready to come into our heavy rainy season. Making sure that our streets are swept, if we have staff that can be on hand a week, you know, prior, you know, to a major storm coming. If we can make sure that we cleaned out our stormwater drains, I mean, that was a big issue. We can't, you know, tell residents to clean it out, but staff can clean it out. But we can, you know, instruct residents to not put their yard debris on it into the streets. Because that was a big issue in, and especially in a lot of areas, the water was just standing there, and it wasn't because it couldn't go anywhere, it was because it was blockage there. And that, that happened, I took pictures and whatnot, and not only in District One, but throughout the City of Sanford, I saw it a lot. And I removed some on my street, but again, I don't want to tell residents to do, do that, that could be an issue. Several roads were underwater this weekend, and again, we can't, we don't know how many inches we're going to get of rain, we just know that that usually happens. But I would like for us, if we were just on board, to know, okay, well, it rained heavy on Saturday, it looks like the weather channel saying we're gonna, it's gonna rain heavily again on Sunday. Maybe we can have the barricades out that says that this street is underwater. Let's just be a little bit proactive about what we're doing, especially because we know what we're facing in, in, in our areas. I know that Hidden Lakes experienced it a lot, downtown does, Melonville was completely underwater. If we had staff that was immediately on hand that had the signs that said, proceed with caution, waters under, I mean, the, the street is flooded underwater. Just how could we, how could we do better so that we don't, so that we don't have the issues that we faced the year before? Now, the projects, the sewer projects that we're undergoing right now won't be done before our hurricane season. So we just need to make sure that we are ready in every way possible. We don't need the day before a hurricane is coming to say that the sand is out. We just need to make sure that people know ahead of time that the sand is out. This weekend, the communication regarding the bore water notice regarding the pressure, it was just mediocre to me.
I give it a lower grade than that.
Okay. I just, I, I felt, and I'm always feeling this way, that I'm always a day late and a dollar short when it comes to informing our constituents. And I'm looking on the city's Facebook page, I'm looking on the city webpage, I'm looking on the city, the county page, so that I can inform people of what's, what's happening. I did receive the text message from Mr. Bonaparte, but when you're trying to quickly relay something to the community, we just need to be, you know, we need to be on point. We need to be, I, I was just, I was not happy with the information. And then our residents weren't happy, I saw it all on social media, I got some telephone calls about the mapping, how we just kind of halfway put information out there. It just looks very poor.
Twenty-four hours later.
Right. I saw a notice of...
The map was put out twenty-four hours later. It was not put out till Saturday afternoon.
Also, and Mayor, you do a really good job, but you shouldn't have to come to the defense of the city every time. I'm watching you on social media, trying to explain to, you know, the residents of three-two-seven, I mean, not residents, but viewers of three-two-seven, that this has, this happened and that happened. And it doesn't look good as a, as a city mayor, for you to constantly have to be explaining what should have already been done. So that's my issue when it, when it comes to the water, we can do better with that. Street parking is a, a, a issue in the historic district, as we're building more homes on vacant lots, we're experiencing more cars being on the street. Now, some of the newer modern homes do have the garages in the rear, but there are a couple that have been built that don't have space for, for cars at all. And because the way that the historic district is set up, that we don't have driveways. It's been brought to my attention again, and I brought it up in my first weekend, Commissioner, that the emergency vehicles are going to have a serious problem with the, the vehicles being on both sides of the road. Now, I happen to live on Paul Meadow, and if you have a truck and your neighbor has a truck, there's no way that the fire department can get down that street. And I've seen it before, because the very day that I became the commissioner, one of the trucks came down to congratulate me, could, could not get down the street, and they were going slow. So I can just imagine if we had a serious emergency. So that's something that we need to look into, I don't know if we need to find out what other cities are doing. We have streets like Magnolia that are larger than streets like Paul Meadow, but we just can't keep ignoring those issues. Because something terrible is going to happen. And I'd really like to put that information out to the residents of what we possibly can do, and to get some assistance from staff regarding our, our street parking issues. I am thankful for the city staff that painted the curves yellow, that seems to be working to prevent guests from parking out into Third Street, and that has worked.
Commissioner, what some cities have done is had resident-only parking. What you're indicating, for instance, on Paul Meadow with two trucks on either side, making it difficult to go through. We could look at restrictions on what vehicles are parked. So I just want to make sure we're understanding...
Right, I don't know exactly what, where we need to go, I just need to, we need to look in and look into it and have conversations, so that I can come back to the residents and say, this is what the city will allow. This is what we could possibly do, and I don't mind meeting with you one-on-one to go over that, but right now I don't have an answer, and I know that that's an issue, so I said that I would bring it up. And I actually wanted to bring it up at the work session, but because of time, I'm bringing it up here, so. And then this is...
Street parking on Elm Street, okay.
Yes, and it really, there should be something across the board throughout the historic district about street parking. And I don't know how it is for other districts, but I know it is a big issue in District One, because there, we don't have driveways in that area. So all we have is street parking, and there are very few homes that actually have a garage in the back because they're that historic. Okay.
Well, so are you, are you asking us to look at parking on Elm Street at the side on Elm?
I'm just, I'm asking for us to have a conversation about... I'm just, I'm, I'm asking for us to have a conversation about what we can do at all. What, like, what, I don't know if there is what the city stands on one side parking. If we can do that, if, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. So I would have that conversation. Okay, and I have, and excuse me if I'm, 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 I'm doing this the wrong way. But I, I've never done this before, and, and I'm, I'm not really sure, so I will, I will ask the legal counsel if, if needed. Um, but I would like to make a motion, and I don't know if I need to discuss something first, or just go ahead and then explain my reasoning for it. But if, if you'll bear with me, I'd like to make a motion of no confidence in our City of Sanford city manager, and I would like to have a discussion about the state of the city and its leadership.
Mr. Bona, do you have some direction there?
I heard a motion. I haven't heard a second. There's no discussion in the last round until there's a second.
A second, bud.
Okay. Well, I would say this is something that certainly should be discussed with the, um, city attorney in advance, but. City Attorney? You have direction on how something like this would be handled?
Well, uh.
Because I'm not sure what a motion of no confidence does.
A motion of, of no confidence is, if it passes, the, it would take a majority of the commission for it to pass. If it passes, it's an expression by the majority of the commission, that they do not have confidence in the city manager. It's not a termination or anything like that, but it's a, it's a criticism, if you will. I'm not sure what you're asking me to do, but, uh, procedurally, it's, it's a motion that I've seen a few times in other cities, and it, it is discussed, and the commission decides as a majority whether they have confidence in the city manager or not.
All right, so the session.
Okay. Um, and, and another reason why I'm bringing it up is because I cannot talk to you all one-on-one about my concerns about, um, our, our, our current city manager. There are several things that I want to discuss, but the first thing I wanna, I wanna talk about, and I understand that we have the city charter and that the city manager has a way of doing things, and that, you know, we work for the will, at the will of the people, and the city manager works at the will of the commission. But the communication really lacks for me, and I was really disappointed in how I was notified, and I want to make this clear. I'm not talking about who was chosen for a position. I'm talking about the notification. I was told that we hired a position, uh, uh, we made a decision to hire for one of our director positions. When I spoke with the city manager on the telephone, I asked several questions. Who interviewed? How much he was paid? And the city manager just kind of gave me a need to, on a need-to-know basis. He said, it was myself, it was the director of the, uh, Human Resources Department, and it was also someone from the county. And I said, well, who was from the county? And then he began to explain to me that they were looking for someone that was energetic, uh, that had the connections, and again, did not answer my question. I also asked, I said, sir, how much was he being, uh, i- is the new, um, person being paid? He said, I don't know, possibly like a hundred thousand. Again, I constantly feel like I'm on a need-to-know basis for someone that works at the will of the commission. That completely bothers me because that I have a lack of knowledge, and it more so when I find out after other people. I'm constantly saying, I don't know. I don't have the answer for you. I will find out why the city has and has not done that. And I stated that in the evaluation, that I need to be able to effectively do my job, and I can't do that if I don't have trust in our current city manager. There is a huge communication problem, and I don't know what that is, but specifically, when I ask you, who did the interviewing, and you just tell me that, I mean, and the city manager just tell me, well, we just had someone from the county. I don't understand that. I, I'm seeing the lack of understanding that the city managers work, works at the will of the commission. And I, I, trust me, I totally get the city charter and how the city manager makes the final decision, or makes the decision at all. But being that, especially for District One, when I have two of the largest economic engines, and I build relationships with our directors, so I know what's happening, so I know how to communicate to my constituents, at least there'd be some courtesy to say, Commissioner, this is who we chose, and, and these are my reasons why. Even if I do not have any choice, because I understand how things work. But it's just the last minute me finding out, knowing before, a resident knowing before me, I just, I don't understand that. And then when I ask specific questions, I don't get an answer. That's one thing, um, that I have a problem with. I can't be effective. I can't be proactive. I honestly don't know how the City of Sanford is completely operating now. I will have, you know, residents, staff members, business owners say one thing to me about they don't understand what's happening with the City of Sanford, and after the fact, I'm like, listen, you need to go to the, the Human Resources Department. You need to come before the commission and let them know, because I just can't keep listening to you all complain about something. But it is the same thing all the time. It is leadership. The communication is not there. And I don't know when, when we stop, do, when do we say, okay, we are sinking. There is a big issue. It just seems like we just continue to, to, to let it go. I went to the lift station because we have really big issues with our water and sewer department with the, the backups. I go down and I see duct tape on one of our large pumps. I was informed that the city manager was there two days prior and was not aware that they were pumped. What was our city manager looking at that I happened to see and complain about, and our city manager did not? I am tired of stating that I do not know. I do not have an answer for that, and I don't know why the city has, hasn't responded. And then again, I did talk about the communication that we had, um, this week. Mr. Bona, our city manager is very quick to respond to us if we send him a, a, a email or a text message. But for a city manager, I just need more than you're quick to respond to a text message. How do we fully execute? What is the, what is the actual answer so that I can provide that information? I don't. No disrespect to our deputy city manager, but he has a lot on his plate. And it's like we're wearing and tearing down our employees. And to add on to his plate, the Public Works Department, at, while he's just getting acquainted to the deputy city manager position, and he has not said one word to me at all, I want to clarify that. I'm seeing it trickle down to our employees. I'm seeing it trickle down to our residents and our businesses. And I just don't know where, where I'm missing it. I don't know if there's just not enough drive, enough energy, if we're just coasting. But I need someone that will help me be an effective, proactive commissioner of District One, and I am not getting it. And I relay this message over and over again. And there are many other things that I want to mention, but again, nerves are getting the best of me. If I'm, I need a city manager that exceeds my expectations. The City of Sanford is in a fragile state. We can either completely, you know, exceed, or we can fall. And I just don't think our current leadership is do, is helping us get that way. Every time I try to build relationships with a director, so that we can have monthly meetings to, so, so that I know what's, what's happening in District One, in the city. They're either leaving, being forced to go, and, and I lose it. How am I gonna be an effective District One commissioner when we just have a, a constant open door, revolving door of people leaving? Then I have to try to meet with someone else, and they understand, this is what Commissioner Britton wants. She likes to meet with them monthly. She doesn't need this information. She likes this information. I don't, I, every time I build a relationship with staff to do better, it just falls apart. And I, I just, I, I need a city manager that exceeds my expectations. I'm not getting that. End of my discussion.
Anybody else?
I, um, I concur with a lot of your sentiments. I've had recent, uh, situations similar. Uh, Friday night to me was a disaster, and for my city manager to tell me at eight-thirty at night, five hours after I first reported the break, that he didn't have any idea if we were under a water boil alert or not, was mind-boggling to me. You've been, you've been in this business way longer than me. You should know after a, a major break, there's always a boil water alert. Friday night was just another example of awful communication. I already had a conversation with Mr. Radzak earlier. I feel like water main breaks to our citizens are as big of a deal as any other emergency, because they don't understand the boil water system, they don't understand the boil water alert, and communication is awful. It's great that you got your message for the other people, but nobody in Hidden Lakes did, and we should have. And I, and I asked, uh, Bill Mercu tonight, and he had no idea, uh, why there was a breakdown in that system for our area, but there was. And I had residents today still not knowing that there was a break. We have cell phones. We have social media. We have all kinds of communication ways these days, and we're just dropping the ball. That's number one. Number two, I questioned you about Lily Court, Commissioner. We're working on that now. We should have been working on that nine months ago when it first happened. How, how is that over there still not taken care of? How's it still overgrown? That didn't happen in nine months. Those are trees growing through our, 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 our sewer line. And this is on you. You are the leader. The base stuff's still not handled. You still haven't responded to many of us about it. It's, it's like we're ran, we're, we're running the city with our head in the sand. And we respond great to emergencies, and, and we can just, all of a sudden, find all kinds of money for emergencies, but day-to-day operations and day-to-day handling of business, it's like we're just meandering. And this is stuff I talked to you about six months ago, uh, the city manager report. I don't have anything here that tells me what you've done the last month, and I asked you about that. I, I still don't have, you've got the great team working for you. I see that. But what are you doing? What are you bringing to the table for us anymore? And it, now, all of a sudden, Honeywell's on your list, and it says it would be a savings of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, but we decided not to do it right now. Wow. The last time I checked, a savings of three hundred thousand dollars would be pretty good, but it was never brought to us to even discuss. That was just, uh, shell. Without even coming to us. It just, it, it just continues to be, and, and, and like Commissioner Britton said, we're the ones that have to answer the public. You're not. They're not asking you, why, why is this happening? Why is this going on? Same thing with the hiring of the Economic Development Director. I'm at a public event Wednesday evening, and I'm being told who our new Economic Development Director is, but not once did I get any kind of information from you. And later on, you tell me you did call me and leave me a message on Monday. Well, if you didn't hear back from me, probably should have been a sign, hey, Commissioner, did you get my message? And this isn't the first time I've heard about stuff. It's going on in the city, major decisions being made, and I wasn't informed. It's been going, my evaluations, uh, I've spoken for themselves the last six, seven years. This is, this is continual. But you'll send me a news article that doesn't apply to the city. You'll send me a, 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 a news, uh, article that we see on our own, but send me some, some meat of what we're doing, and what's going on, and what you're doing.
Anybody else? Mr. Wiggins, you got anything to add?
You should.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, but you, you just made a statement earlier that the city did not let you know about what was happening, and.
Oh, well, that, but again, uh, you talking about during the work session?
Yeah.
Oh, we're doing the work session. That wasn't, again, on him. That was somebody else speaking out and not telling the truth about something.
Staff met with, with, with city officials, and that should have been relayed to you in your district, that we met with Ms. Baker, we met with such a special.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, wait. I talked to Mr. Bonaparte. See, this is something, again, that it seems like I might be, and I don't know about, uh, Patty or, or Mayor, it may seem like, uh, I'm not saying I'm the favorite. I talked with him.
I, I.
And the stuff that I asked him, he get back to me on. So that's why I let y'all talk. I'm not saying what y'all ain't saying didn't happen with you all. But what I'm saying to you all is, when I ask him things, he follows up with it with me. So even when I said earlier about the work session, that wasn't something that was, and he had already talked to me. Some people, some citizens were lying. That's what I was saying when they brought that up, but it had nothing to do with him. So all, I'm, I, and I'm gonna stick on this. You, you good for me. And so if there's a problem, I'm able to come talk to you, and we talk about it, and then we get it straightened out. I can't talk what you guys are talking. And, and I can't be changed and make me wanna say something different. When I call or text or come and sit down with him, we work on what needs to be taken care of.
So, Mr. Wiggins. And who?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, kinda like Commissioner Wiggins, Mr. Bonaparte does reach out. Mr., I, Mr. Bonaparte, I, I have no problem contacting Mr. Bonaparte. To the point that we had a problem, we had a house that was flooding Saturday night, I think. And we still don't really know if it's in the city or the county, because there, there's a big back and forth on where that, oh, big bad, it's in Goldsboro, but it may be awfully close to the county, or it may be in the county regardless. I, I felt for these people, because the house had flooded once before. And, um, at that time, we still weren't sure where the house was, but Bilal was able to get something done with the drain that got the water out of there and kinda saved the house. And so with Bilal being gone, I called Norton, and it was almost midnight, and he got Russ on the phone. They got on the phone with the county. The county said it's not our jurisdiction. I'm talking to the homeowner. Norton's calling me back at, you know, twelve-thirty, one o'clock in the morning, okay? Because he, he didn't wanna see this house flood either. I don't have a problem in the world getting ahold of him or being gotten ahold of by him. I don't always agree with his decisions, and there is a recent decision that I vehemently disagreed with, to the point that I was pretty upset about it, until I finally called him and said, you know, I need for you to just, you know, explain this to me, because this could be the, the parting of our ways. And once he kind of explained why he made the decision that he made, and he did it in detail, then I completely got it, you know? Um, so I get frustrated sometimes, but then I, I have to go back to, well, it wasn't my decision to make in, in the first place. It was his decision. And, you know, the successor, thirty, or that individual, it, it lies with Mr. Bonaparte. And, and, um, but, but, you know, so, you know, don't always agree, but I can get ahold of him. He can get ahold of me. Um, when I ask him to do something, he does it. When I ask him to get information for me, most of the time, you know, I get that information that I'm seeking. Um, I do think, I, I, I hear what the two of y'all are saying, but I would ask, you know, in all seriousness, okay, so the boil water alert, you know, was on the city's website. It was on the city's Facebook page. Okay, so the, the reverse, the, the reverse nine-one-one, or whatever it is, didn't go out, you, you know, I got a call about it. Um, so I got a call about the boil water alert. I mean, what? Uh, yeah, okay, so.
It didn't make it on the Facebook page until five hours later.
Five hours later.
The map with boil water did not get on the Facebook page or be sent out until twenty-four hours later. That is unacceptable.
And this is not the first time.
It's not the first time.
And Commissioner.
And I've complained about it before. And also, the sewer, vacuum sewer system is not one hundred percent. And I'm still having complaints every week. The calling system is still not working right. But yet I don't get any answers or response from you about why it's not working, why isn't it fixed? And why am I, why am I still getting complaints?
But let me also say, tell you this, um, Commissioner Austin. And I'm not denying what you're saying is true. It's probably true. But I was a little bit confused on what was causing this flooding, causing this flooding. So before I called Mr. Bonaparte, it, that's the first number I called was for the vacuum sewer. I immediately got a call back from a man named Robert who could not have been more helpful and he explained that it's not, this is not what you need to work on. You need to look at, at this, 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 it's not, this is not the vacuum sewer. My point is, it certainly did work for me at, at midnight on Saturday night.
All right, my residents are lies. Good job. Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you. Don't thank me.
Listen.
I just said it worked for me, Patrick. I didn't say anything about your people. So.
Commissioner Mahaney, you said, and I, and I have the utmost respect for you, but you said the success and fail or failure falls on Mr. Bonaparte. I beg to differ. The success and failure, failure falls on the city of Sanford. When, when, when we fail, our city fails, our businesses fail, our residents fail. Our houses are flooded. Our cars are hit. It's not, I.
I said of the individual that was hired.
Right, but still, if, if that person fails, it is not just on the city, the city manager. We all feel the effects of it and I just, he's not meeting my expectations. And whether he's doing a good job, you make more than a hundred thousand dollars. You should exceed my expectations every time. What?
True.
My expectations should be exceeded. And I don't think that I'm just, I took tonight and just decided to just go off on the city manager. I've had these issues over and over again. And after the last evaluation, after we talked, the mayor kinda shut me down. I said, okay, I'm just gonna give the city manager the benefit of the doubt. And maybe I'm asking for too much. And yet again, we're constantly having these things. And the things that I've mentioned aren't even all of the things that I'm talking about. It's just, I can't have these discussions with, with you all privately without bringing it up. So I had to do a vote of no confidence because I don't trust our current city manager to assist me in being an effective commissioner.
Have you been getting calls for nine months from residents that can't flush their toilets? They can't do their laundry? That are embarrassed when their family come to town?
Yep, and, and also the other problems, water bill issues.
You don't have a vacuum system, do you?
Patrick, don't tell me no, I haven't. They call me just as much. A lot of them call. Of course I get calls. You don't think that there are people down there in that district that don't do well?
Are you still with it or not?
Yeah. Patrick, they're working on it. It's being worked on.
There were a lot of things that.
We were told, we were told four weeks ago it's one hundred percent.
I do not recall the words one hundred percent.
Okay. Greg, am I wrong?
Yeah, we got, you know, all of them got, you know, saved with a hundred percent. But.
And I'm still getting constant phone calls about water bills. And that's driving me crazy too, but I, I don't think that that can be fixed overnight either. We, we know we've implemented, you know, the program to fix that. I mean.
You must understand that it's not an attack on the person. And I am just saying what my expectations are for a city manager. I have no problem with Mr. Norton Bonaparte. When I talk to him, I show him the utmost respect and he can tell you every text message. I'm, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. I'll get to you, sir. I'm always respectful. But I have a duty, and I'm not saying that any of you all don't. But I have a duty to the city of Sanford and District One to do my job to the best of my ability. And I'm only giving half because that's only what I got. And if we continue to make excuses because we don't want to upset the person, then we've got a problem. Our city is growing rapidly. We're not even thinking about all of the things that are about to, to hit us. We are building like it's, it's no tomorrow. We're tearing down our trees. Morale is low. Nobody wants to come work for the city of Sanford. Our ceilings are falling apart. You walk through, uh, the break room, you go to HR. This had a hole in it before. And I hear from directors, I hear from staff members. But nobody wants to put their neck out there because they don't wanna be next. They don't wanna be, have a bad evaluation. They don't want to for it to affect them in the future. But we cannot ignore that we do not have a problem. And we seriously do. And I talked about this before and I said, I wanna have an emergency meeting. The mayor shut that down. Then I'm on the news saying the city of Sanford is a sinking ship. Because we have a city manager that will possibly manage to put us in the ground. And I cannot stand for that.
She, that's one, that's your opinion.
No, it's the facts. I do, with, with.
Your opinion is not the fact.
It is true.
It's not the facts. It's one person's opinion. All right, Mr. Wiggins?
Okay. So all of y'all said something. Okay, now it's my turn. I understand the concern. I have had some of the same concern. I have had conversations with the city manager about those. I am not to the point of not having competence in this city to run the city. And I'm sure we will continue to have some conversations about the things that I disagree with on. And the things I have talked about have, I have seen improvement. Are there still that, will there always be something wrong that needs to be fixed? Yes. Was I concerned that Lily Court wasn't getting taken care of as soon as I thought it was, it should? Yes. Was it explained to me why they looked at other parts of the system first? Yes. So at this point, I'm not willing to say I don't have competences in his ability to run the city because I think he does. And so we're gonna call the vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nine. Fails, three to two.
That concludes the report for District One.
Okay. Commissioner Wiggins?
Um, last week at, um, my community meeting, we, uh, had Second Chance U there. Uh, actually, the mayor and I went out together. Uh, they're a, a business that, which is actually out near the airport that gives, uh, citizens second chances with opportunity to learn HVAC. And, uh, they don't have to have gotten in trouble with the dealer, but even if they are trying to get a second chance alive, it's a free program and it lasts about, what, six weeks, Mayor?
Six and a half weeks.
Six and a half weeks. So if you guys know anyone that's interested for that, um, you can get with me afterwards. Uh, they came and spoke at the meeting. Anytime that I have my community meetings, once a month at West Side, Fourth Thursday, I have this, uh, organization to leave their, uh, paperwork so that you can get in touch with them. Again, uh, I think maybe it was worth like eight hundred, eighteen hundred bucks of equipment that they get free and give them opportunity to start a career, uh, in HVAC.
Can I jump in on that one with you? Because I went to their graduation Friday night. Uh, they had nine students graduating. And these are students that after six and a half weeks are employable in an air conditioning business.
Yes.
And, um, all nine of them passed the course. They're waiting to get the results of the test. But the other thing I really like about that program is they place those people in the jumps.
Yes. So that's something else if you know someone that's thinking about trying to get a second chance or looking to go on HVAC. We have information. Um, also at my meeting, uh, True Health was there. With True Health, that I'll announce this each month leading up to it next, actually next month, the twenty-fourth of, uh, July at two P M, True Health is going in Historic Goldsboro Boulevard. They're going to actively do their soft opening. We'll have a clinic in Historic Goldsboro Boulevard. And then on August the ninth at eleven A M, we have the grand opening. So we have the clinic as well as we have a pharmacy on Historic Goldsboro Boulevard. Uh, last thing is, I wanna thank SPD, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, for getting the guys to come out on, uh, Friday. Thank you. Uh, we were out in the, uh, we had a, a dual food giveaway in partnership with Picnic Project in Second Harvest, guys. And I do it, uh, throughout the year. Ten months out of the year, I do it in my community, in my district. And we do about fifty to sixty families. Uh, twice a year, in December, we'll do it at Salvation Army. And then in January or July, one of those months I choose, we'll go to, uh, Allen Chapel in Goldsboro. And, uh, this past Friday, uh, in all of that stormy rain, for about three hours, uh, myself and our volunteers, Picnic Project, Seminole High's football team, Yemen of Excellence. Uh, we even had our school, one of our school board members, uh, Autumn Garrett was there with us and we fed, but we gave away uh, groceries to over three hundred plus families and loaded their cars down with our groceries. So, uh, again, thank you, SPD, and support for that.
Mr. Austin?
Um, I'd like to talk about the boil water alert again. I don't believe we're communicating what it means, how long it will happen. Uh, this weekend, it ended up falling over a Sunday, which apparently makes it not forty-eight hours, makes it seventy-two hours. Um, I don't think we're communicating that clearly enough. I don't think we communicate the procedure and why it has to be done. Uh, it's state mandated. Maybe we need to share what state, uh, rules or law or whatever that covers it says. I believe this was a valve failure this time. Um, again, I, I have questions about, uh, the maintenance and people of our system overall. Are we, are we staying on, for years, this city's been ran on a band-aid approval. And we're doing a lot of catch-up. And that's fallen on this commission, and this city manager. But it's time for us not to be a band-aid anymore and, and be proactive in fixing. Normally, a, a break is due, uh, to some kind of obstruction. But this time it was our equipment, right? That's all I, that's all I understand.
Let's find out.
Bill Mercu, City Manager? Yeah, we, um, uh, it was a, a line break on a major line on, uh, between Seventeen Ninety-two and Sanford Avenue on East Second Line Boulevard. Uh, um, we are in the process of digging it up. We valved it off. It, it wasn't a valve failure. It wasn't. We valved it off in order to restore water services. Um, and they did that within an hour, which was pretty good. We worked closely with the, um, uh, county's emergency management, uh, throughout the afternoon. That timing is, uh, difficult because we're in out-of-city hall. And so I had to make the calls to try to establish the impact area. We got various information. Uh, we heard from you about Hidden Lakes had been impacted. The county services, um, uh, said the jail was out. They were out. They said their annex was at the airport was out. I called Boomba, I called Cattlemen. I had to try to create an, um, impact area. So, and this was, I was doing this by myself on Friday night. And so, uh, unfortunately, uh, I don't have access to GIS at that time of day. I didn't have any staff or anything. So I had to go with a narrative, uh, description until Saturday morning when I could get with the staff and try to, uh, create a map. And that was the delay. The timing was difficult and I understand your criticism. But I did the best I could individually. And, uh, but at the same time, we worked closely with Lisa Holder. We put it out on Nextdoor. We put it on, on social media. Uh, we worked, uh, in an alert seminal. I got a report unfortunately that their success rate was above ten percent uh, in the calls. So you were, you were making comments about, you weren't being reached though. A lot of people unfortunately have to find out why that was the case, but we, there was a report on that. So we did the best we could. We did, you know, in contact with the, um, um, you know, some of the media that was involved there. And the Public Information Office with Seminole County because they were impacted and was very close. Yeah, we can do better. The time was, you know, unfortunate, you know, being at night and, and limited staff and it's, and, uh, I tried to create, you know, an impact area. It was, it was obviously that, uh, that it was, you know, significant, no question. And.
In my conversation with Mr. Radzak, I asked, like, why don't we treat this like an E O C issue? There should be a team that's called in for me to readdress issues like this. Especially since this one was twenty percent of our customers? Twenty-five percent? That's.
That's significant. And we have, uh, we make them a good suggestion. We can think about, you know, a, a better SWAT team. We, unfortunately, one of, uh, the key departures, uh, um, at, in my area, uh, was a water resource engineer who, who left because he went back home in Ok, to Oklahoma. But he would help me do the maps and do a lot of those critical things. And I just don't, I just don't have that position filled right now. And so that I was at a, you know, a disadvantage on there. And so we had kind of a, um, you know, a, a good little team there that attacked most things throughout the weekends typically. I just don't have it, uh, I didn't have it on Friday night and, uh, uh, hopefully tomorrow we'll get a better communication. Uh, uh, we hope to be able to lift a boil water notice tomorrow. Yes, it's by state statute. If, uh, we lose water pressure, um, below twenty P S I or if there's no pressure at all for any amount of time, we have to engage that. It's a precautionary boil water notice. So if somebody has, you know, finds out late that they've had water, you know, they drank the water, then, you know, it's more likely they're safe. But we encourage them to follow the guidelines.
But we need to, we need to do a better job communicating that. I understand that.
Can I jump in here?
Yes.
Just one of my suggestions is going to be that when we have the boil water notice, can we give that some explanation of why there's a boil water notice? What the rules are and what the timeline is for when it might be lifted?
Well, we, we, uh, we can't guarantee that because it's all related on, in terms of the results, we have to wait for the set lab results.
But we know it will be at least.
Well, we tell people to, to keep, you know, to stay in touch. We'll update the information line on the website when, when the event information is out.
Okay, so what are your father's table? And you have six hundred employees that you need to tell whether to come in or not? You need some idea of when it might be lifted. Father's table hadn't shut down. And they were calling me to, to find out. And that's why I called you to find out when the test happens. So I agree with that.
Right.
But, but we need to be able to say, you know, we have to have the test. They have to be this far apart. And the earliest we will get results will be. And get that time. That's my opinion on what needs to be.
I understand. But, but it need, just to give a full explanation of that, you have to have successful, and, and sometimes they have been delayed. We don't wanna misrepresent the potentiality that the thing might, might not come back exactly when you, so that's why we don't say. We used to say two days, but we don't do that anymore because things, you know, quick.
But if you said the, the earliest we will update this will be.
Tuesday morning. You already knew that.
And I know not to come back and check the website until Tuesday morning.
Well, we can be more specific than that.
But then you and the rest of the people just will see Tuesday morning and they go, oh.
We have had comments that we should have a daily update, even though we have to wait for the test results. We, and, and, you know, we can always improve, you know, the communication. But, but basically, we have to wait for results. And we tried to convey that at the beginning that we're testing and we will, you know, update the information as it becomes available. But until that time, we all, all we can say is we're waiting for the result.
So you still, uh, so we had a break, but you still didn't say why?
Uh, I, we don't have full information that's being investigated right now and still being compared.
It wasn't from construction.
Excuse me?
It wasn't from construction.
No, it wasn't.
It had some kind of failure in our line.
It, it could have been, you know, again, pipes are interconnected. It could have had some kind of, um, geologic failure there. It kind of separated the pipes. Just not quite sure, yeah.
Okay, and then Mike, one more time?
Sure.
Art, is there a specific lab we have to use? Or is there a potential that there's a lab out there we can use that is open?
We'll check that. Uh, they have, uh, we've had different, there's different labs out there. I'm not quite sure of their availability. It seemed like it would be reasonable we'd close on a Sunday. But of course, you know, in our business, we need them to be open, uh, you know. We need them to be open, uh, you know, at all of good times and such. So we can check that out.
Thank you.
Is this our first boil water notice? Is our first, this is our first time break? Because I've been living here forty-four years and we should not be discussing how we should go about this. This is unacceptable. I'm not talking about you, Bill. I'm just saying, we're talking like this is our very first water break. It's our very first boil water notice. And we're talking about how we should be communicating this stuff. That's what I'm talking about, the problem is.
And this is, this is the second or third of my district this last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And your crew was really fast.
Yes.
My first call to you was, we're on the way to find a break. And then thirty minutes later, I think I got a message that was things.
Well, I'll have to do it somewhere.
Wait, anything else?
I already covered the, uh, vacuum sewer system in twenty-one oh two Sanford Avenue. I'd, I'd like to know why it continues to fail. I'd like that to give the Kimick family answers. They've lived at that house for a long time, great supporters of this city.
Yeah, I know. It was disappointing to hear that. Um, we say that it was a hundred percent, it's fully functional in all areas. So that was the last leg that we got up that didn't have any leaks, so had the vacuum. I think with the amount of rain that we got, talking to managers of plants and sewer and water, I think that just inundated the system over the weekend.
But that keeps happening. And so, well, how are we going to get around?
Well, we got another batch of controllers and valves coming tomorrow. So they're making them as fast as they can to replace all these items in the pits.
Okay, so it's going to, the replaced parts are gonna.
Yeah, we're getting another batch tomorrow, forty or fifty. So I talked to Cedric yesterday, uh, today about that. And, uh, so we're getting shipments as fast as they can make them. So I'm thinking, will we replace all these components of the system? We're going to experience some of these problems here and there, especially with the amount of rain we get.
And like I asked, uh, a year ago, now just about, um, perhaps, if this is too much for our staff and there's too much to cover, there has to be a source that we can pull in to help us. Well, the court could have been cleared by somebody by now. So it just.
So contract.
We have, we have to start thinking outside the box. I mean, and we have to be proactive.
Have to be.
That's all.
Let me ask you a question to make sure my memory is correct. The new valves that are going in do not stop working.
Not supposed to.
Not supposed to be either.
As opposed to the old ones did not work underwater, these are supposed to work.
Immersible, they operate, never tested.
I just want to make sure that I remember that correctly.
And we're supposed to be able to pinpoint these issues.
Yeah, and that was what I was just going to mention, to make sure you're on line. That the telemetry that we're working on, we're working on getting some purchasing, uh, roadblocks out of the way. But this will allow our crews to find out the problem and get alerts before residents call us. So they'll have it on their phone apps or computers, laptops, uh, tough hooks or whatever. So we get a red symbol for Sanford Brewing is at level or something. And then we can go out there before a problem occurs. So we're working through that telemetry. Those are the pedestals that are going to be now. And we're working on that too, or, um, working to purchase it.
You know, you know, just kind of make clear where's when they do the program on the vacuum sewer system and it's sort of antiquated. You know, and maybe one thing we should be doing proactive is getting that at, you know, long-term. You know, then you start setting some money aside. At long-term, what are we going to do? How can, you know, how can we move completely out of that system? Because we're only going to have trouble with it. I'm sure how much you, like, did, except for the more than old guy.
And, uh, one of the things I wanted to advise you, we got the P O issue to our consultants and engineers. We're getting toughies, Sanford Brewing and Willow Tree off of the sewer, uh, grab, uh, vacuum sewer, not with the gravity. So that design works in the process, so we're working on it. Um, but that's, um, it's going to take some time. I think we really need to invest in our infrastructure. Take a look at that in the future. I think we need to come up with a, uh, just being in the position for just a short period of time. But we really need to look at a utilities master plan.
Yeah.
And getting an expert to look at our systems. And what do we need to do and set out a plan for the next ten years?
Oh, and next quarter even maybe.
Yeah, whatever it takes, because the growth we're dealing with now and, and so, uh, it's just.
Absolutely, I think we need to do that. Absolutely.
That's something they're worried about, working on the managers and I are working on a, a master plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Ross?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Man.
I haven't tried to talk to the owners of the mall. Has, have, we had any movement at all on anything to do with the mall that, that you all have heard about? Um. Nothing at all. So, um, I'm still having, you know, businesses are even out of their living room. We still have no air conditioning. Is, is there not, um, definitely, the big problem building that it is with, with the failing air conditioning system? Um, and the fact that they, that one business, I know, it just had an employee fake from me. Is there, is there not, um, is there any code enforcement? Can you, is there any pressure we can put on them?
Mr. Armando is here. I think he's already been out. Yes. Rob's already been out there, I looked at.
We, we looked at that issue, Commissioner, and, um, and there was also an allegation mold. And we didn't think there was anything that we could do that rose to leveling. Yeah, just not seen.
Even on the exterior of the building? Because like, that's like our gateway to the city. And like, Burdance is pink and the, the, the black stuff is coming all down the building. As well as the landscaping is no longer taken care of on any side of the mall. The weeds are growing up over the shrubs. It's not taken care of at all.
The shrubs are dying. It's Macy's, by the way.
Yeah, the old Macy's.
Yeah, the old Macy's. Yeah, shrub weeds dying, landscaping is dying. Tony, is there nothing we can?
There's never nothing we can do. There's always got to be options, Commissioner. What I'll do is after the executive management meeting in the morning, I'm going to drive out there personally. I'll take a member of staff with me and we will really, uh, kind of go over the finding, come and look and evaluate what we can do in terms of, of enforcement and just getting that area cleaned up. Because I agree with you, there are some, there's some areas that need to do the improvement.
You know, this is just, it, this is just terrible. And I don't know what we can do to get some movement from these, these stuffs. I, I just, you know, I've talked to him, you've talked to him, Lawrence talked to him.
And it's always our bad.
Oh, yeah.
Wait, Tony, while you're there, and I'm so sorry, I know we're still in, um, Commissioner Mahoney's. Um, but on First Street, there, it used to be like a riot building. The, they have the paper there and now it has just really deteriorated. Looked like something from the walking dead. I thought we weren't allowed to have it like that. It's our gateway into downtown.
Where are you talking about?
On First Street, uh, French Avenue, First Street, right across from where the new Dollar Tree is going.
Firestone.
Firestone. So it's completely covered with brown paper. But the brown paper has been up there so long that I don't know if it's moisture or whatnot. And it looks like flesh. Is there something that we can?
Absolutely, there's something to do about that. So thank you for helping us bring that one to my attention. I think that one, at face value, the way you described it, would be enforceable.
Okay.
Making a look at it.
And, yeah. Bill, the lady that you talked to, that we had to go around with, that you, that, you know, about the phone number and you had trouble getting a hold of her, the lady you talked to, Dr. Louisville? She just got another one from y'all for three hundred and some dollars. And she is beyond upset and furious. Well, can you, can you ask Mr. working to contact her again? Just, we can't keep, you know, we just keep, keep beating these same people up with these, these, these water bills. I mean, this, the woman was, was religiously having about a sixty dollar a month bill. One older person lives in the house who doesn't cook. And now they got one that's three hundred dollars.
The, uh, mass meter exchange program will be starting in September. But unfortunately, we'll be starting with the commercial sector.
I thought we were starting it.
Um, for the, uh, uh, for the past couple of years, primarily looking at adjustments and making corrections of bills. And, uh, so, you know, I can get the information, we'll work on it.
You still got her number?
Uh, I won't need that probably, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm not sure, I just don't got it. But, Thornton, yeah, we've got it. You've got to get this worked out for this lady.
Yeah, we, uh, unfortunately, our staff is dedicated primarily to that, uh, these days. Until we can change out the system, but, uh, we can work with it.
If you don't have the phone number, you have the address.
Yeah. Because they've got to work together. It's getting ready to sue the city too, so.
Anything else?
Look, we could get, uh, the driver so that we can get in touch with them.
Yeah, I'm going to have to get with her and.
All right. I'll try and get on everybody else, so I don't have anything else to say.
Wait, no, are, are we going to talk about the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
The street is, the, the street is blocked off. So how we're handling it, how we're going to notify residents?
Lisa still here?
Yes, she is.
What's the, what's the plan for Fourth of July? Would the park park to close? And are we going out of the way to communicate that to people who might be coming down there trying to not be closed?
Yes. And I hate to use the term a fluid situation, but that is exactly what it is. And no pun intended in this sound, I promise you. We are working interdepartmentally, uh, to find out the location. We're specifically talking for everybody watching Seminole Boulevard, um, which we have the project going through public works. So we're working, um, there is a possibility, what we're hearing is that it will be temporarily open. However, I will tell you that in our department meetings today, we're looking at just blockading the entire area. We have concerns about, we want people to be safe first. Uh, and if that means pushing everybody, we shifted our footprint to the left, or to the west. I, we should start with that. So there will be more activity from Lake Corolla down to Palmetto. Uh, we won't be using Fort Mellon Park at all for vendors or music. We're shifting everything, as I said, to the west. So that will be going out. I know Ms. Holder was speaking with Jerry Sullivan and Jennifer Brooks today about getting that message out. We've just discussed, not hours ago, looking at an aerial map with kind of just an overlay of a, a red blocked out area. And just letting people know that, you know, partner does fall, we improve, uh, but we're going to have to make these revisions. There is some issue with lighting on the riverwalk, so we're bringing in extra tower lights. We may have to bring in more, uh, because it is a very dark area. And once we go to lunch, which will be about nine fifteen, that will be the most important time. And then on the egress of people getting out. So it will be a fast and furious, um, consistent media campaign to get the word out. Uh, they have postings planned for each of the day that will pick up leading up to the, the event day.
My pleasure, Drew. All right, now we're.
This is a moment, but, but thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Ah, you're Mr. Keller.
How you doing?
I'll be out tomorrow. I'm going to grab your, uh, plans, but give me a call.
Not, not too early because otherwise you'll disturb my people.
No, sir, no, sir.
I think all the help I can get.
I think what you're going to have to do is that last, uh, market space is in that curve. I think you probably like right there. You're probably going to put your hands around.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's a, but I can. I don't think that should probably.
I've never done this before.
I can't really tell yet over the, over the.
Property appraiser?
Uh-huh. But hey, it looks like, you know, a property like this, curved. The best I can tell is it looks like it's right, it's actually curves here and then it fades right there. It looks just like that. I think it's, yeah, the last page. This is Alan and Frank.
Right.
It's right there on the line. I'm hoping you'll have some plans.
You'll have some time.
Is your email on yet? I'll just, I'll probably draw it or email it and show you. Because if you put it on your property, you can do that tomorrow. You put it in the right of way, it's going to cause all kinds of problems.
Well, we don't want to put it on the right.
You'll get a staff recommendation of denial. Or request, because it requires the right of way that you agreed. You'll get a denial from, you can counsel, because what you do is use a private, uh, use a public right of way for common purpose. You see what I'm saying? Everybody would want.
That, that, that's why we wanted to come down and address it tonight.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I called you late at nine, I know.
Yeah, that's okay.
But I just got that email from Craig.
I was standing right outside the building when you called.
But I will be there tomorrow and I will call you and email you later.
Okay. Well, I can just write it down, I'm not that awful far away, so.
Ah, no problem.
One deal, give me a call, I can.
I can probably discover it right on my, before you plan, I might be able to find it.
Oh, I got a shot. When we bought it, we had the plans and that was one thing that was kind of, kind of sort of discussed then.
Well, you have a, you have a lot of, uh, you have a lot of land, which is very, very good.
It, well, the bad part though is the way they've got the building set up, that is about the only place that you can put a team.